This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning. Thank you all for coming. And I believe you're here for the proposed changes to the rules and regs so that we can get your input into it. Delighted to see the number of people who are here. Just some of the ground rules, what we'll do is we'll go through the proposed changes as they are listed. We have had input from, we've received a number of emails from people as we talked about it after the board meeting. And then we talked about it at the "We're Listening" session that occurred last Thursday. And now we're going to talk about it now to get the, sort of the, I was going to say the final input into it, still, but that's not true. After you leave this, if you still have some input that you want to give us, please email us or call us, or try not to knock us down in the driveway, but to be able to give that to us. Our venue of getting information is via email. We do not respond to posts that are on Facebook. And so, please, if there's any conversation at Facebook, we might see it, but it is not something that really is a formal way of getting hold of us. So, how this will work today is that we'll go through the proposed changes, give you a little information about the rationale and how that proposal came about, and give you some information of some feedback we've received from others regarding it, and then we'll ask you for your feedback. We will be monitoring the chats that are occurring online, and also we'll be getting information from you here to come up to the mic and give us your name and your lot number. What we request is that you limit your comments to a unique comment, not something that has been said before, and that any resident only has one comment per topic. The same thing in the chat. Sometimes the chat looks like it's just a coffee klatch, if you will, of people giving another "yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, but" in it. We want to see that, but we only want one comment per person, per topic. So is that fair? Okay, good. Thank you all for coming. The first, a little background, the rules and regs are a governing document that is something that the board has the opportunity to change, and that's written in the CCNRs, that the board, based on the things that are in the CCNRs, can make rules to talk about how those things can be enforced. So it is not something that necessarily the community votes on, but we do listen to every person's input as to whether that rule needs to be tweaked, changed, or not implemented at all. We do understand that any of the rules that we implement have to be enforceable. So we can't just put in place a rule that looks good on paper, but doesn't mean anything from an enforcement perspective. And so, that's one thing that we have to always take a look at. And how these came about is that we don't make changes to the rules willy-nilly because it is a document that we do have to have available for everybody, and that there's not changes that you're not kept aware of. A few years back, a group did get together to, from the DRC, who talked about some of the things that they would like to see changed. We, as board members, are kept abreast all the time of all the legal state statutes that might come into play, that we would need to incorporate into the rules. And then we get issues from compliance about some of, what are the things that are problematic? So that's how the document came to play. There is nothing in this document that is carved in stone. For all you masons out there, there's nothing carved in stone at this point in time. So let me start then with just the, some of the easy ones. Well, I'll go down the list. The second one down is controversial, so I guess I can't say that that's an easy one. The first one is just further definition of a guest. And the rationale for just trying to change this has to do with, as many of you are aware, the City of Surprise has now implemented some ordinance as related to rentals, and that anything less than 30-day rental, the City of Surprise will be putting some things into play. We know from when we talked about rentals in the past, many of you own property, you have a couple of lots here that you use specifically for your family and friends when they come down. So this would be able to clarify what is, that those people can continue to do that, and it's not considered a rental in the City of Surprise's perspective. So in essence, and there's be some wordsmithing that would go along with this, I think it would be that a non-resident who stays overnight with a resident or additional property owned by the resident, that's new wording, for which the resident does not receive compensation, that would be considered a guest. And the timeframe is limited not to exceed 14 days. So there really is no change in the 14-day rule. It's just clarifying that a guest is someone who can stay up to 14 days, that either stays in your lot or another lot, and you do not receive compensation. So are there any comments related to that specific change in wording? Again, I'm monitoring the chat line, so those of you who are attending virtually, if you have any comments, please let us know. Anybody here, raise your hand, come up? Okay. Name and lot number, please.
Kathy Connor, lot number 1312. How do you monitor that?
Well, they would have to still put in a notice of occupancy and let us know that someone is here. The guests really do need to register so that we know that they're here. And particularly if it's on a second lot that normally is vacant, we need to know that someone is there. There are issues, not particularly in Happy Trails, but other places, that there'll be a vacant lot, and maybe you can get a squatter in there. Some of the bank-owned properties have people that come through on a monthly basis to assure that there's no squatters. So our patrol, as they go and make their rounds, if they see lights on the place that there's not supposed to be someone there, then they would look that up. So that's how we'd be monitoring.
Betty's saying, you have to register your guest, and you're hoping that they're all honest.
Correct. Hoping that they're not, hoping that they're honest, yes, that is the hope. Okay. A little bit of trust.
I have a neighbor down the street who has a boyfriend, okay? She owns the lot, and he lives with her.
Uh-huh. So if he is a significant other, he's not a guest. He could be listed as a permanent occupant, that's the term that the office uses, and they would expect that, I know it's not a very elegant term, living in sin, I mean, what do you want?
That's where I was going.
Yeah, okay. So a permanent occupant, then they would need to fill out the notice of occupancy. So in essence, they're like a year-round renter.
Okay.
Okay.
But there again, as I, when I came up and talked to you ladies before, how in the world are you going to, you know, find a way to find out how these people are abusing the system?
For the people...
Your neighbor, let me finish. Your neighbor's going to have to turn you in, right? Okay? But they do, okay? And what do you do about them? Yeah? And you give them three or four days, right? By that time, they're gone. Okay. I just, what I'm saying is, you gotta find a way, if you make the rules, and all of the rules you guys have got here, you gotta make it so you can, you know, control it.
Yes.
Okay? But first of all, we all own our own lots, we live in a neighborhood, we pay taxes, okay? So, I'm done.
You also live in an HOA with rules. So in no way does this say, Ron, anything about how many boyfriends or girlfriends any individual person can have, and/or the frequency that they're turning over. We're not going to get into that. But this is really so those who, it has nothing to do with the significant others. This is just, has to do with those people who are short-term, guests, friends and families who are staying on your lot or somebody else's lot, and not receiving compensation, so that it doesn't fall under the City of Surprise ordinance regarding rentals. Nothing's changed. Any other comments? So we'll wordsmith that a little bit about, currently it says a person who resides, it would be a non-resident who resides. The next one is the one that is controversial, has to do with the length of the RVs. Currently, and I want to reiterate, that this, the length of the RVs does not apply to the ranch. The ranch is governed by the plat, which is filed with the City of Surprise years ago when the community got developed, and in the ranch, according to the plat, it has to be 28 feet Class A. So by us making a change to the other RVs, it's for all other sections that allow RVs. So the current, it is 24 feet, you cannot have a recreational vehicle less than 24 feet, and the recommendation from people is that we change that to 18 feet. There are people who say, I really would like to see that change, because I'm getting older, my spouse doesn't want me driving the Class A any longer, as being, I'm a child of parents who, we had to say to them, you are not driving that Class A any longer, and that they want to be able to downsize to something smaller. So currently, they could only downsize to a 24-footer, and the ask from some residents and others is that we change that to 18. So I'd like your input. The option could be that you could do it if it is in a habitable space. Currently, like we changed, you changed, by allowing the CCNR change, to if you had a habitable structure and you had an RV in there, you could go through the process of getting it removed by going through the DRC. And one of the reasons that we, and you, changed that rule was part of it, back to Ron, getting be able to enforce it, if you had a Class A on your lot, even if you had a habitable space, we still required that you slept in it, not your habitable space. So we weren't going around knocking on people's doors at 2:00 in the morning to find out whether they're sleeping in their RV. So we changed that. So Brian, you have a comment. Name, lot number, please.
Brian Armodo, lot 291. After we got this proposed rule change, I was given a compliance warning letter about my Mercedes Sprinter on my lot, that I had on my lot for 19 months. I also had two permits given on my lot, one for pavers, one for a shade wall around my car port, my RV port. So that means somebody came to my lot four times. Why wasn't a compliance warning given to me then? That's not the big issue for me. The big issue is...
Don't touch the bottom, just keep it right here.
I have a 900-square-foot Arizona room. My van is a van. I use it for business, I use it for recreation. It's almost like saying, I can sleep in my van, yes, I can sleep in my truck, too. Both of those vehicles are what you would call conversion. They're not one-trick ponies. The point I'm trying to make is, there's a lot of us that have these small vans that are used for transportation to and from their other homes to Happy Trails. And while they're on the lot, I'm sure 99% of them are not sleeping in 84 square feet when they got 900 square feet to sleep in. My van doesn't have the typical RV things like gray tanks, black tanks, doesn't have a TV, doesn't have a microwave, doesn't have a cooktop, doesn't have a designated sleeping area. What I'm trying to say is, you know, the rules can be specific. Like, in other words, you can have an 18-footer used as transportation, but it cannot be used to sleep in.
So the recommendation would be that we change, you have to have a habitable space on your property. Couple of things, though, Brian. So what you can do from that compliance is you can write an appeal to the board and ask for a hearing with the board, and we can do an executive session. There's two things, though, that a person could be out of compliance. There's one about the RV has to be 24 feet or longer, 24 feet or longer. And you were on the DRC when a lot of these rules changed. In fact, you were instrumental in getting the RV port removal process. So yours isn't an RV, though, it looks like an RV from the outside, but yours is a van. And currently, a van is not, and that hasn't been addressed here, it's not allowed. It's a prohibited vehicle. So that's another thing that we need to take a look at, and being able, should we change that rule about allowing passenger vans? What's the difference between your vehicle that you have and a minivan?
There isn't any real...
What's the difference between yours and one of those Ford Transit vans? There isn't.
Ford Transit, there really isn't.
It's a little white truck.
Mine has accessories that allow it to be a camper van, but as we, as I can prove to you, there's probably a dozen instances where there are conversion vans that have been here in Happy Trails on a park model lot. You can't have two RVs on a park model lot. But that's been happening since I've been here over 10 years. And I've even had, when I first purchased my lot, I had a Volkswagen camper van. I've never received a compliance letter. So what I'm trying to say is, let's make a rule.
Right. That's what we're trying to do. So the two issues is that, does the community want us to change the rule if you have an RV on your lot in an RV port? And it's currently the rule that it has to be at least 20 feet, excuse me, 24 feet long. Is the community wanting to change it so that we would allow, and I'm talking an RV right now, so let's say it was a true Class B, if you will, that we change it to be 18, 19, 20 feet? That's the question. So we're trying to get there. The issue, Brian, and as you say, there's a lot of people who bend the rules. What's irritating to us and the rest of the community is the people who bend the rules and then want the rule changed. For the other 50% of the community that wants the rules in place, asks to make the change and then implement the change. And that's an irritant, if you will.
Well, the problem, too, is the way the rules are written, it's not written clear. In a sense, there's a lot of, let's say, I can have mine conversion van as long as it's the only vehicle on the lot. Again, you know, you're allowing something to take place if and then there's an exception, but the exception is very weak, I would say, in the point that, you know, if you look at the way that the description of recreational vehicle, that could include an ATV.
Well, you can't sleep in it. Recreational...
If you look at the description, except for our particular description, and when you talk about residence vehicle, you're talking pretty much about a permanent type of vehicle that you can live in. My van would never be considered, my 24-foot RV, previous to this one, could be permanent residence, but my van, definitely not. I don't even have sewer holes attached.
Right. Thank you, Brian. So what we hear from residents who are against this change is that the community is an RV resort, and that they don't want it to turn into a trailer park, in feeling that if we go down in size, it would become a trailer park. And that's the concern, as you hear, we've got about the same number of claps, who people who want it changed, for people that don't want it changed. So that's what we have to take into consideration.
Let me make one comment about that situation. If you look at really the terminology of trailer parks, they look more like park models as trailer parks, you know what I'm saying? When you have an RV resort, an RV park, you're going to find camper vans. Class Bs are the second most popular class of RVs being sold today. But having 100 Class Bs on the lot in a resort, nobody would look at it as a trailer park, they would look at it as an RV resort.
Okay. Your time is up. And appreciate your comment, there are other people that are wanting to make comments here. The, when I said trailer park, what I also hear from people is campground, and what's different? If we look even at the Winnebago website, a Class B is considered a camper van. So that's all the input that we are wanting from people, is that how can we come up with something that allows people to downsize as they age? Yeah, just a second. And that still fits in with how they want this community to look.
So if I could interject for just a minute, because this particular one was a lot of conversations over several months. So we came up with some options, and that's where Barb was talking about, would it be feasible to have an 18, 19, or 20-footer if we have a habitable space available? Which, I don't see that a problem. Now, most of you know 712, that's my lot, it's a vacant lot. Would I want to see an 18- or 19- footer on there? No, I really would not. I don't know how many vacant lots we have, but I know that I'm not in support of that. I am in support of possibly changing the length, if it's pretty much conceived while here, is that if there's a habitable spot. So we are trying to make it amenable to everybody. And Barb's right, she talked about the RV park, but I've also received people saying, how many times are we going to allow people to put in these snuggle wides and these park models, and now it becomes what I would call a mobile home park? So it is a real delicate balance. Now, that cat is, I mean, that horse is out of the barn, I don't know how we do that, but if we can at least be amenable to those people that want to downsize a little bit so they can travel and it's easier for, that's what we're trying to work out. And remember, it's a community, so our rights kind of, you know, we all have to get along.
Thank you. Name and lot number, please.
Christine Aldrich, lot 561. To address the Sprinter van type issue, I mean, can't we change the definition of an RV to a fully-contained, it does say fully self-contained vehicle, well, I should say fully self-contained, right? So it has to have all of those...
Have a potty and...
A cooking facility, sleeping facilities, bathroom. Okay, so that addresses his issue, correct?
Well, his is not a Class B, his is a van, it doesn't have those things in it.
Okay, right.
That's a different rule.
Okay. And the other issue is the length of RVs. I personally prefer it not to go down, but on the other hand, I'm seeing them already here, that are under 24 feet. And so, my question is, I've seen some replaced into other lots. So we are approved for a specific RV on our lot, and when people leave and come back, they're not checking to make sure you're returning with that same approved RV. I've come back, I've gone out on camping trips, I come back, nobody checks to make sure I'm bringing back the same RV. So RVs are being replaced currently, and they're not, that rule is not enforced.
Thank you, and that's a good point, hadn't thought of that. All right. There was a comment in the chat. You're not allowed to fall in here, okay? Just a second, just a second, I'll get you. "I see this as an issue because many of the smaller RVs with stuff, with personal items that must be moved out of the RV for them to stay. These fits do not fit under the RV or out of sight in some of these lots, this could become an eyesore. We must need to be cognizant of this proverbial problem." That was a comment from the chat. Go ahead, sir.
I got a question. To me...
Name and lot number, and bring the microphone, a little closer, microphone closer.
Jerry Simmons, 487. I consider the board, your personal function is to manage and maintain our property values. Is that correct?
Correct.
Whatever it takes to manage it. Okay. Now, I've talked to Mike, I recently purchased a trailer and it's under the 24. Okay, and he said that they're going to have these meetings, whatever, and I called him while I was, before I brought it back from Oregon. I've driven around, and I've seen about at least 15 smaller RVs in vans, and vans parked with park models, which, legal? I've seen the same one in different lots for four years. You know, like the guy says, if you're going to have a rule, go buy it. All right? So I've got a smaller trailer, I purchased a stick-built house where I paid extra to have an RV so I could park beside it. I sold my large RV downscale, okay? Like we were saying, a lot of people can't drive them anymore today, the cost of fuel, and everything changes. So since I've been here, they've changed, you can build a house higher. You've changed all the things that you wanted, but, and I know it's a touchy situation. Some people say, don't get no small RV in there. I say, drop the size, but go by the year and the condition of the RV. We don't want to make an eyesore, and I've driven around and there's eyesores, you guys drive by every day. Why don't you go after them?
Thank you.
Now, wait a minute. So also, there's no more RV spots left over there in storage. If, maybe I'm wrong, I could be all wet, but way more RVs that take a pickup truck to haul them. Where's the pickups? 99% of the pickups that are in here are parked alongside an RV already. So maybe I'm wrong, but it just seems odd to me that they're in there if there's that many. One more thing. All right. So what you're telling me, I can't have a 20-foot RV in my lot. So basically, what you're saying, I'm not 6'2", I can't live in this place. Same thing. You're putting a size limit on an RV, so basically, you could be putting a size limit on me. I'm not 6'2", I don't belong in the park.
That's a whole different set of rules that we probably shouldn't address.
That's it. To me, so, you know, like I say...
We only allow people from Washington State in, so...
Well, I'm not from Washington State. So anyways, that's...
I understand, we appreciate that.
That's all I've got.
That is the conundrum.
I just feel, if you're going to change the ruling, make it where it's the condition and the year of the coach.
Yeah, well, and that's one of the things that we'll be looking at.
Because there's some old coaches in here...
We understand.
That shouldn't be in here if you're going to make limits, so.
Yeah. I understand that, thank you. Regarding the, you drive around and you see things. So yes, there are residents who are out of compliance, and hopefully, they are getting letters, and getting fines for that, and we see that. There are also some residents, particularly for a Class B, I know that we had two Class Bs that have been allowed in here because it was the only vehicle that they had, or that it was a fair housing variance that was asked for, because it was the only vehicle the spouse could use if they had to travel to go to the doctor. So we do make exceptions, rare, rarely exceptions related to that. Now, you wanted to make a comment? Okay, all right. Go ahead. Just a second. I, uh, for those that are attending virtually, could you please turn off your cameras? Um, and with others online with cameras on, it's making the viewing area very small. I've been told to say that. Okay.
My name is John Lesh and I live at Lot 971. And I, I think that the change is great, except I think the length is arbitrary. I think the length needs to be reduced to 13 or 14 feet because there are some really nice, smaller travel trailers that are livable, especially on Arizona room lots, that meet all the other requirements as far as being a hard side, having fixed facilities for a bathroom and cooking facilities. The issue is, as you get older, like the man previous to me said, uh, you don't want to drive a monster truck or a monster vehicle. And most SUVs nowadays are rated to tow about 5,000 pounds. So if you get an 18-foot travel trailer, it typically weighs about 5,000 pounds to start with. By the time you put any equipment in it, you're talking 6,500. So therefore you have to have a Ford F-150 or something like that to pull it. So if you get a 14-foot, which Airstream makes a really nice 14-foot, only costs about $60,000, uh, it weighs about 3,500 pounds. So you put another 1,500 pounds in there, it's 5,000, it's still legally towable. The other issue is if we keep allowing people to convert their lots like mine to Arizona rooms where they continue to put park models in there, what's gonna happen is the city of Surprise is gonna re-change the zoning location of this and they're gonna call it a housing development instead of an RV park. So we need to make it where it's reasonable for people to be able to park their RVs next to their house.
Thank you. I do want to clarify. We, from a tax perspective, we are not an RV resort. For all former board members, Jim Marion, would you confirm with that? And Mike Ruggel. So to say that by making changes and allowing more park models in, we would lose our RV status from a tax perspective, that is incorrect. It is incorrect. So for people to continue saying that, I just want to clarify it again, that it makes no difference. When our pad got put in place, when the community got started over 35 years ago, it said what would occur in the various sections. And the pad allows park models in there. The pad specifies that the ranch can only be 28-foot class As. The pad talks about what can be in the country, uh, section eight. There's a term for country club homes. So the pad supersedes our CCNRs by what we can allow. Nothing in any of those previous documents or in our current documents has anything that says we must maintain a minimum X number RV lots or a maximum number of park models or anything like that. So we have nothing that we can rely on that would minimize, that could, that we could enforce. For those of you who bought a bare lot or bought even, um, yeah, a, a bare lot, you have every right to put whatever you want on it. By that, I mean, a stick-built Arizona room, a snuggle wide, a park model. Um, you, based on the CCNRs, particularly in the section I live in, section one, you may or may not be able to put a double wide in. So tho, those restrictions are there. But for those of us who might want, gee, wouldn't it be nice if we could minimize the number of snuggle wides or park models or have a max, minimum number of RV lots? That horse is out of the barn. And it would take a two-thirds vote, it would take a referendum, it would take a two-thirds vote of the community to change that. And that's not the path we're going down at this time. Okay? Okay. Gonna move on to the next one. The, one final question, not a statement on this.
Yes, good morning. My name is Fred Terranova, Lot 1140. I presently sit on the FMCA, uh, Long Range Planning Committee. And we're going through a rebranding for FMCA because of the wording. So I'd like to bring your attention to, RVs are motorhomes, camper vans, coaches, caravans, fifth-wheel trailers, pop-up campers, and truck campers. A Westfalia, like one gentleman brought up, is 15 feet in length and is a self-contained unit. It has a cooking, it has a porta-pot, which is a dump. Uh, so I find it really hard how you're going to contain people from bringing in vehicles that are self-contained units that don't need the minimum 18-foot requirement that you're trying to impose. Because if somebody has a Westfalia, which is 15 feet, six feet wide, and it's self-contained, legally, it's a recreational vehicle.
You, you're correct. And, and I appreciate that you guys are talking about a rebranding and that's definitely information that we can take into consideration. We're an HOA with rules and having to get by what can visibly be on a lot that maintains people's value, that it looks, uh, doesn't look like a campground. So I appreciate that and hopefully maybe you're a part of FMCA too, that, uh, we can get that information to us and as we look at possible changes. But currently, we're talking about rules. The definitions are in our CCNRs. So we'd have to change the definitions of a recreational vehicle versus CC, uh, residence vehicle, and that would take a vote of the residents.
And that's what I'm bringing my point on.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all for those comments. Appreciate that. Good info. I've not seen anything additional in the chat. We'll move on to the next. 1.4(c) just is, um, updating the maximum square footage of a vacation villa. And that's consistent with changes that occurred this last, uh, spring and makes it so that they can be up to 1,252 square feet. Any comments about that from any of the residents? None of you get heartburn over that? Good, good, good. It's kind of a done deal. Um, the next one is about a habitable space. This is just, um, clarifying, um, the statement that a hab, an Arizona room is a habitable structure located on the lot and used for residential purposes as approved by the city. And that's just a change that's consistent with our CCNRs from last year. Um, the, in the comment about a resident is an owner or resident who resides, we took out the words "in a residence vehicle" on a designated lot, just to remove unnecessary wording. Any questions, comments about that? Seeing no heartburn? Well, you really can't see heartburn, but you can feel it. Uh, a visitor, we just eliminated a portion of that. So, yes, go ahead, Donna. So let me state that, yes, you have an Arizona room on, on your space.
Right.
But yours is, um, not a stick, let me back up. You don't have an RV port because you have a park model in your RV port.
I have an RV.
No, no. Where your park model is.
Okay.
Is where the RV port pad would be.
Okay.
Of which, on your park model, an Arizona room got attached. This really talks about a stick-built place. Um, who's got, she has a stick-built place and an RV in her RV port. So that's considered a habitable space. So that's what this is referring to.
Okay, so my front Arizona room.
Your porch enclosed.
Yeah, the porch, enclosed porch, Arizona room. Um, that is still not inhabitable?
Is not habit, inhabitable, no. Not by the city, no.
You're killing me.
No.
So I can't have air conditioning and I can't have a heater in there? Because I was told I was not allowed to put air in or heater in.
It's not considered habitable. I, I know that because I inherited that property from my parents, so I know this property. So, no, it is not. And that's something you need to deal with DRC on.
Okay. All right, I just, I wanted to clear.
So this spot here just talks pretty much about the stick-built homes. We have a vacant RV port. And it's just clarifying what we've had in the CCNRs.
Okay. Makes sense.
Thank you. So, um, the visitor one, just eliminating the, that they're not staying overnight. So a visitor is someone who doesn't stay overnight and therefore we don't have to worry about the 14-day. The lot caretaker, um, we added in there as a definition and somehow it's not on my version here. Okay. Yeah. And we may change this term to, um, go ahead. A person hired by a homeowner while he or she is away from the property to extended periods who will perform and, um, service does negotiate with the homeowner such as lot maintenance on the exterior or services within the home. Caretakers would be available to answer emergency questions. We're open to words missing on this. Uh, some people are concerned about that it says it's hired and it doesn't, and I think that all of us would agree it doesn't have to be hired. It could be friend, family. But at least there'd be a person who is available to the DRC or management if an issue arises on the property when the resident is off-site. So that's just the purpose of that. You know, when you do an extended leave of it, the, the expectation is that you have a caretaker on-site for those. Yeah, I thought it was. No, that's someplace else. It's not on this one. Right. Yeah. And there's been questions, could we change that so that the timing is consistent between when you have to fill out a departure form and the, having a, a defined caretaker, um, listed? And we might change those dates to be inconsistent. If one says 13.5 days, the other should say 13.5. Okay. All right.
John Schilcode, uh, 2171. Why not just change hired to appointed in writing?
Appointed in writing. Um, we might change that, I mentioned to the other board members yesterday at the New Order Orientation, Amy gave a nice presentation to the residents about when she comes around looking for compliance issues. And she referred to it as a lot care attendant. And I kind of like that term. She felt caretaker sounded more like a nursing home, but whatever. So, but as long as we're consistent. Just a second here. I know, I'm, um. I don't know why my summary doesn't look the same as yours. Sorry. Right, so age verification, basically we're just reiterating that it, that it's now required that you do it. It has always been required, but we just strengthened the rule to say it will be required and that residents must comply with the federally mandated age verication survey every two years. That has to do with our 55 and older community, 55-plus category from Fair Housing, that if we don't comply with that, every two years they're doing the survey and we are not meeting those intents, we potentially could lose that categorization. So it's just in essence saying that thou shalt, um, comply with it. Any questions, comments on that? Seeing none. Uh, vehicles on the sidewalks, common areas. That's just, in the, in that area, we just said that, we just added the definition of common areas are defined in the CCNRs. So in essence, you can't do that. So vehicles on the sidewalks, this would be a few years back, uh, a group, and I don't know who was, I, I know a person who was involved in it. Jim Marion, you were on the board at the time. I think you sanctioned this, to have a group come up with when we would allow golf carts on the sidewalks within town center. And the group came up with a recommendation that golf carts would only be allowed in, in neighborhood centers and town center for the purpose of pickup and drop-off. And that's particularly like in, um, particularly in town center, uh, where the pet park with the, um, stitchery, lapidary, lanthana, ceramics, billiards, those areas, that having golf carts up there gets in the way of other veh, particularly maintenance people, housekeeping and all, and that, um, they would allow them to be up there for just pickup and drop-off. So the purpose of this would be that there would be an exception created. Currently, golf carts are not allowed on Tom's Town Center. That may be news to people, uh, because you see them. Uh, but we would allow an exception. So a resident with a disabled parking permit may apply for an exception to allow the golf cart to be driven on the patios or sidewalks of a neighborhood center or the town center for the sole purpose of pickup and drop-off, and the golf cart must not be left unattended. Purpose of that is that our sidewalks are not intended to be driven on by multiple people. And it impacts, it deteriorates the product, the concrete, and it would need to be replaced more often. And in addition, it obstructs the flow of traffic. So any comments, questions, concerns about that? If we, uh, we may have to look long-term at, do we need additional parking places? But that's a whole different issue. Okay.
The carts?
Microphone, please. Name and.
Hi, my name is Lori Popper and I'm at Lot 2124. Um, yes, I'm a bicyclist and, um, I was wondering about the carts that stay stationary, you know, when they're, um, I know this is gonna upset some dog owners, but the dogs that are over by, um.
By the gazebo.
The kiosk. And, and they just stay there and then you have to go around it. And I know carts have to go around it. So how long do they have to stay there or can they stay there?
We'll be discussing that at the safety meeting. Um, and so it, it is, is a concern of folks. It's also from what we understand, there are people parking there who then are going to play tennis and that kind of stuff.
Yes.
They're very long-term. So really, what's short-term, what's long-term? There is an issue, I believe, for some people as they are driving and making that curve, that they don't necessarily see the golf carts parked in there. There's potential for accident. But I know the safety committee a few years, for, but a few years back, even there was a sign that got put up there that said there might be some golf carts.
Can they have a sign that says 10 minutes, 15 minutes?
That's what Roberta's lays on at the safety.
Oh, I thought this was part of the safety minute meeting. That's what we had said. Okay, and then I have one more question about safety. So when's the meeting? Because it has to do with my bicycle riding. I almost got hit yesterday by a cart.
Mike can tell us. Do you, do you get access to the blast? You're not on the neighbor network or on a computer? Okay. October 21st? No, we're past that. November 20th? November 21st.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions about, um, the golf carts on public land? Okay. Um, the smoking and vaping, the only difference that we've added to this was that you've never been able to smoke within 20 feet of a building. Uh, but now we've added that to it with, uh, outside of the pool fencing. Uh, we've got a lot of complaints about people smoking around that. And we added the word vaping. I don't see many of you vaping, but, um, I'm sure there's a couple of you out there. Any questions about that? The male center one, just a terminology change, oh, sorry, extended absences. So we used to say that you had to do an arrival and departure form if you left the resort after seven days. We're now changing that to 30 days. If you've gone for just 14 days, you don't need to let us know. It's nice if you let us know, but you really need to let us know if you're gonna be gone for 30 days or longer. And then the caretaker, um, you need to be known if you're gonna be gone more than 45 days. We'll probably change that to 30/30 so it's consistent. Because the same thing is true. We need a caretaker if you're gonna be gone for a long time. I don't know if no, some of you noticed, but every once in a while, there's a water leak. And that's not something that if you're in Europe, um, that you easily get a hold of change. I see there's a, um, there's a comment here. I believe the no golf cart rule in town center was established by the Surprise Fire Department before changing that rule. I think this issue with, uh, the fire department needs to be reviewed. We'll look into that. We think we, think we could be somewhat in compliance, particularly if we say that that is, cannot be left unattended, that it can, short-term, it's for the people. It's for the people going up and dropping their heavy equipment off, their heavy craft supplies and that kind of stuff, and then taking it back and getting the golf cart off there. The mail center is just changing the terminology, because you know, we used to be with USPS, but that changed six years ago, and now, it's called the mail center. It's just a single drop. Now, the one that is controversial is the, the water conservation. So, we wanted a placeholder for water conservation in the rules because it hadn't been in there before. And as you know, there is drought situation, and there's different levels of categories that has been associated by the federal government, looking at what level of act, action needs to take place. We are currently, I believe, at level two, something that we had occurred. This has to do more with the Colorado River, where we get, Arizona gets a lot of its water. And we, they felt that we would be at a problematic situation in 2024, and actually, we hit that in 2021. And as a result of that level that you hit, then the federal government makes changes to those water suppliers. It's not affecting Happy Trails at this time. It's not affecting residence, residents at this time. But as the drought situation is not improving, we know there will be a day, probably within the next five to 10 years, when there will be restrictions on residential water. So, we wanted a placeholder in that. And so, the current recommendation, this would be a new rule that's open for discussion, that would say that, and as Mike promises, that there will be a new car wash facility in place. He doesn't want to talk about it. Now, Mike, can you take your hat off? Prior to this, he had hair, but he doesn't now. So, so there's water conservation, but the other issue has to do with asphalt. One of the worst things that occur in asphalt is a lot of water on it. That deteriorates the asphalt. And you know that every year, we've had to do asphalt replacement projects that cost us a minimum of a half a million dollars, if not $750,000. So, this is, this rule has to do with water conservation, about potential drought and any restrictions we might have in the future, but also about preserving our community's asphalt. So, the recommendation would be that passenger vehicles shall only be washed in the designated car wash area, not on the owner's lot. That's number one. A recreational vehicle may be detailed on the lot up to twice per year. And any washing done on the lot should be done with a pressure washer with a flow rate of a certain pers, a certain amount. And that park models and other buildings shall only be washed once when the owner arrives at the, at the beginning of the season. So, response from residents online is, well, it's been somewhat polite. Didn't start out with, who the hell are you, telling us what we can do? But the issue a lot has been with the power washer and how that 2-liter per minute can be regulated and all. So, we could maybe change it to the recommendation being that if you're going to wash your RV on your lot, we recommend that you use a power washer on it versus a requirement for a specific amount, or a waterless wash. There were some suggestions too, that if you're going to have your RV detailed on your property, which many people do, how that that person needed to bring their own designated, in the, bring in their own water. Well, how, and how different is that if I'm doing it myself? I'm using the water and all. So, we don't have anything like that in there right now. So, you have a comment? Name, rank, social security number?
Cheryl Blacketer, Lot 1048. The last part says, park models and other buildings shall be washed once when the owner arrives. I'm a year-round owner, and I usually have my house washed every couple of years, and it's usually in November, end of October, usually November. So, if everybody does it like in September 1st or October 1st, that'd be a lot of water at one time.
We can just say once a year?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. What else? How does this relate conceptually? And then, what tweaking might need to be applied?
Terry Bader, Lot 953. I was just wondering why cars or personal vehicles were, you know, taken into consideration as you don't, you can't wash your vehicle air anymore. How did that come about?
Asphalt and the frequently, frequency that it's being done.
Okay. Now, I know in certain areas, the asphalt center had been filled with concrete, which I guess takes care of that. But was there any checkers to see how many people actually wash their vehicles in here on a regular basis?
We hear about it all the time.
Okay. So, people, there are frequent people that wash their cars here on a regular basis. What happens to every other type of vehicle, golf carts that are washed every day? Does they fall into that category? Or a fellow comes back with his side-by-side or his four-wheeler?
Yes.
And he's sitting out there washing that vehicle?
It falls into it.
So, that doesn't fall into that?
It's supposed to use as a passenger vehicle, wasn't it? Yeah.
So, but it's not, it is not, I don't think.
He was driving it and he had a passenger.
Well, that would really have to be, okay. Okay.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. So, the wording could be changed. I see what you're saying where it says vehicles, but you're right, a side-by-side, somebody who's been out in the desert, golf carts?
Golf carts.
Because that's a big issue. There are people that wash their golf carts every day. I applaud them for being cleanly. That's great. Waterless wash, that's all I can say. Those type, that type of verbiage can certainly be added in that process.
And you'll.
And include them.
And you put the fellow out of business that washes cars in here?
I saw that on, on Facebook, and I really was saddened by that, that the, someone said, and the board's going to put BJ out of business. And that, I just thought was.
Well, theoretically.
We haven't made any decisions.
Okay.
You know, and, and, and exceptions can be made, but certainly, that was not the intent. The intent is for those people who are frequently washing their cars and their vehicles, and there, we have a car wash that it can be done that minimizes the amount of excess water that gets on our asphalt.
Well, the one thing that I know we had asked for when you folks were getting the new car wash, and some folks had mentioned it, that the water here is very difficult to wash your car with. Everybody knows if you wash your car, then unless you dry it within five minutes, it's completely covered with spots. Now, we had mentioned when you folks were going to put the car wash in, that you might want to get some type of water purification. One, it's going to make the pressure washing system last much longer. Also, when we wash our car, we don't have to immediately dry it within five minutes because your car will be totally covered with spots which you can't get off.
Thank you.
The other thing I want to bring up is, if you folks are going to go down the road of water conservation, we have to look at the whole park. I mean, when we see water running down the street from irrigation that's not taken care of, or we're watering hundreds of thousands of square feet of grass?
Yep.
That is water usage-heavy, I think, well, reclaimed or not, it.
We understand.
We water during the day, all right, with the sunshine. I'm from Florida. I don't, we're not allowed to do that. You can't water when the sun's out. You will get a perm, a ticket, like there's no tomorrow. But I just think, singling out this car thing, because I'm a car guy, I like detailing my car, my lot, I wash my car, and maybe it gets washed twice a month. It's not a whole lot of water. I just think it's, you're, you're going down a road which I don't really understand when there's so many other ways in here to conserve water. And it, the car washing thing, I just don't think it's, it's a path to go down at this point. I really don't. And especially, like I've said before, to go use that car wash, I'm not going to use it because.
It's, it's a, it's a combination of water and asphalt.
I understand.
And asphalt costs us a lot, costs you.
Absolutely.
A lot of money. And that's a lot of it why your rates have gone up every year, is that.
I understand that, but I don't, I just don't think that's the path to go down. And I also feel like, you know, when they do the new areas, they put in the concrete apron in the center, and that's where the water down. A lot of water does not flow here because the roads are just not correct for the water to flow. And that's a lot of times where water just sits there and destroys the asphalt. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comment from the, as, as you're coming up, sir, comment from the chat was, if limiting water pressure is a maximum, then you have to have that water register otherwise unenforceable. We all live in the desert. Water conservation should have happened years ago, so many other areas have had water conservation for many years. It's time Happy Trails got up to speed. Sir? Move your hand up higher.
Is? Horace from 1002. My wife and Sharon and I have been here for seven years now, and I just want to say, you're talking about water conservation, you're talking about asphalt, you're talking about all that. The first question that I have, I go to the golf course three days a week, and I'm there at about 6:00. And as I drive down Happy Trails Boulevard, I see the sprinkler systems running out onto the asphalt. And, and i- it's amazing how much water is being wasted. I, I work at the golf course, so I understand what Jason's using as far as recycled water is concerned, but I know the water that Happy Trails is using along Happy Trails Boulevard is not recycled water. That's.
It is part of the recycle.
It is part, okay, great. That's good to hear.
So, the other.
Then, the second, the second question that I have is, when you talk about the asphalt and the water hurting the asphalt, why is there a DRC regulation that says that all of our gutters have to be on our homes, if you have a permitted home here, and those gutters have to be faced towards the asphalt? Just, just a question.
That's a, so, two points. I've had, asked that same question. Why isn't it going to, onto your, into the dirt or something like that on your property? So, we can talk about, you and I are on that bandwagon, and we can get that changed.
Last thing is.
Let me just, regarding your thing about the sprinkler system and it going onto the road, that is one thing that building grounds and maintenance and others have looked at is, as we look at making changes, should we maybe, I'm talking about Happy Trails Boulevard right now, instead of the grass coming all the way down to the curb, maybe it should come up X number of feet so that that's just gravel and that the, and the grass is above it so it doesn't get onto it. So, to redirect the sprinklers.
Many of the things that we're talking about here right now, though, I think, need to be discussed internally and then have owners provide input, which is what we're doing right now.
Right, right.
Okay? The last thing is, I, my wife has an Arizona car that we leave here. We're snowbirds, back to Washington and so forth and so on. It's a convertible. I can't take her car like I do my truck through the car wash. When I come down here, I buy a six-month pass to the car wash, and I take my truck through the car wash as many times a month as I want. But my wife's convertible has to be hand-washed. Now, when, since I've been here, I got here on September 12th, and I got a little note through one of the blasts that said, oh, the car wash is going to be open shortly. I went down and I talked to some of the guys that were there in the car wash working, and I'm not going to say who it was, but they told me, oh, yeah, the contractor to install the car wash is in Texas, the car wash parts are in Phoenix, and they can't seem to get together. So, that's, that, that to me, and now, you're telling me that I can't wash my wife's car, and she's coming back down here in two weeks, and if her car isn't clean, I'm weak.
So, maybe if we could leave the comments about the car wash off the table for right now, because when we purchased, when we signed the contract with them, it was supposed to be installed within six weeks. So, it's a, a source of frustration for everybody. Mike gets assurances that it will be done. We did just sign, just within the last two weeks, the final check to them, so we can always make that bounce, can't we? So.
Let me clarify, the final check for the actual car wash system, we did not pay the vendor.
Thank you for that. So, hold on just a second, Debbie. So, then someone said, the amount of water used here does not affect the asphalt. Well, I would, I would say that we have professional consulting firms who talk, who help us with our asphalt, and they make it very clear that the water draining does affect the asphalt. He asked about, what about the rain in Seattle? They must have to stop the rain there to save the asphalt. I live in the Seattle area. I'm aware of the rain, but the Happy Trails residents are not having to pay for the replacement of the asphalt in Seattle. Okay. All right. Debbie?
Debbie Cheek, Lot 219. My question concerns the washing your house or property only once a year when you arrive. A year or two back, we had problems with street cleaners, and we swept up the dirt in front of our lot, and it was 30 pounds of dirt. It now keeps our trash can from blowing over in the wind. Should something like this happen again, can we have an exception?
And the issue of it being once or twice a year, I mean, that's something, but people that are doing their RVs, that were saying they can do that twice a year, what's the difference about a house twice a year?
Most of us aren't going to go through the effort unless it's really needed.
Exactly. Right. Okay. Thank you. Sir?
Hi, Kim Baxter, 1247. Yeah, with the two issues, A, with the asphalt degradation due to water flowage, I think they take into account when they laid on this asphalt, its lifespan, and you know, how much water's actually going to take to the road. I'd be very interested in knowing this knowledge of, of the rapid degradation of this asphalt, because I don't think that's entirely correct. I did a lot of road paving in my life. I know it doesn't go away very easily, and I think there could be some more information gathered on this.
I just let you know, I don't make stuff up.
No. I think your, your consultants haven't consulted thoroughly with you about the lifespan of asphalt. That's all.
We pay a lot for our asphalt repair, replacement and maintenance every year. Well, you all pay for it.
It's not water soluble.
We're trying to minimize that. So, what I'd like for you to do is get on the BG&amp;M committee.
It's a possibility. We'll see how a lot my time is. I'm still somewhat new here.
So, what we look for is people such as yourself who have expertise in these types of things that can help inform.
I have a fair amount of road construction experience. Yes, I've laid a lot of asphalt.
Very good.
And, and concrete.
Very good.
By the way, I might go into concrete subcontracting, a little plug for myself. Might be doing small jobs and stuff.
All right. Very good. Okay.
However, the other issue.
The other issue.
That's all I wanted to say about that. Just asphalt is not water soluble. I'm sorry. Next, I would say about your car wash. Great idea. Bad deal that it's taking so long. I know you want to show this. Two things I'm concerned about with that is, a lot of water is getting used because that isn't operational, and I know, that's a bad no-no. Also, I recommend a look into feasibility of a affluent water recovery system from that car wash, which would allow to recycle the water better, better recovery, less usage. And also, when the other gentleman mentioned about a purification system, I also recommend looking into the feasibility of a, it comes to me slowly, so you give me a second here. No, not zero water. It's actually called a deionizer, which allows this water to literally wick right off, much like Rain-X does on a windshield, and you don't end up with those spots. Just took me a minute to recover that in my vocabulary. Okay, folks, that's, thank you.
Thank you. Very helpful. Anything new? Thank you.
Doug Till, 1173.
Could you give us your name again? Your name again, please.
Doug Till. And I'd like to just kind of voice my opinion of rules. I hate to see hard, fast rules that come in. I think everybody's pretty well aware of our water situation here in Arizona. here in Arizona, in fact, across the whole United States. So, I guess I would say, I'd like for you to err on not having such hard, fast rules. Maybe it's kind of a recommendation would be more feasible, and let people be, like the other gentleman's talked about his cars and stuff like that. I'm the same way. I'd like to wash my vehicle, hand wash it. And so, just kind of what I have to say.
Thank you, I hear that. One more on this topic, and then we'll move on.
Dan Phillips, lot 676. And I'm here to defend my wife's use of a hose. She's smiling back there.
Keeping peace in the family, okay.
She, she likes to keep things clean, but not with having water run out.
Bring your...
But not without having water run out in the asphalt. So we don't need a power washer to do that, to rinse off our fencing, to rinse the floor, somebody spills something, to use the hose. It stays on our property, the water, and dries up, you know. But I can see the way this rule is written, if she's out there with her hose, somebody can say, well, get yourself a power washer. And, you know, we, I don't think, I don't think it's necessary. And I think in some ways, the rule should reflect the fact that recommending that people don't allow the water to go on the asphalt. That's the main point of this. The conservation, we're all, many of us are trying to work on conservation. We don't have to get too far ahead for the little things, you know. We're not, you know, we're not using a lot of water, I don't think here, other than maybe, you know, and our bills have been the same, pretty much. So, until somebody tells us, okay, you need to really pay attention to it, then of course we do, we'll be, we'll be told to do that. But we can have a little bit of flexibility, more recommendations. Keeping it off the asphalt makes a lot of sense. I don't like the water going down the asphalt. So, and you can handle a lot of things without having that happen. So that's my thoughts.
So, let me just, and I saw this out on Facebook, so it's not my idea. With regard to the pressure washer, everybody thinks of a pressure washer as in a containment thing. There is a device out there, apparently is a pressure washer hose attachment, and it's about, if I heard correctly or read correctly, it was about 20 bucks at Lowe's or Home Depot. So it might be something to look at, but then your wife could still use her hose, and she just had the adapter on the end of it. But that's just an idea.
So, we appreciate that. And as we said, we wanted something in the rules about water conservation as a placeholder, knowing that in the future, we may have some requirements from the city, or, excuse me, or EPCOR, who gives us our water. As you know, you've all been in places where they said you could only water your lawn Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, between X number of hours and that kind of stuff. So we didn't want to go down that path because we don't have that rule, but we're anticipating that maybe the city might have those. So your comments about how we might wordsmith a little bit better to make it more of recommendation and all, are well, are taken into account. The other, someone said, what people are not taking into consideration, the acid content in our water that is not in other states like Washington. That was a comment on the chat. The next item has to do with estate and private sales. This is something that would be a new rule, and it would be related to estate or private sales that are outside our normal yard sale dates. And it states that an estate or private sale will be limited to times when the residence or lot is being sold. We've gotten feedback from some residents that, which I think is true, could be wordsmithed, that is to when a resident might be leaving the property, i.e. going to assisted living or nursing home. So, limited to times when the residence is being, when the owner is no longer being on the property, and that contracted professional agencies may not bring in outside merchandise, and arrangements must be made with the management office. So, feedback on that. So we've had issues where someone might be having an estate sale, and you know, there are professional agencies that will do those types of things. But what we've heard is that some people are, those outside agencies are bringing a whole bunch of their things that they also want to sell, that it is not limited to that particular lot. So we would not allow that to happen.
I will say, that just happened this last spring, and it went on for, seemed like forever. Okay, three days, but it seemed like a whole lot, because it was on my street. And they had the entire house and RV lot and every square inch full of stuff. And I know it wasn't all that individual's merchandise, so we want to put this rule in, so if some, you bring somebody in, they are aware that they can only sell what is contained on that lot, and not bring additional merchandise. It created a nightmare for traffic and everything else.
I don't see any other questions or comments related to that one. The next one has to do with excess trash. Now, this is something that we're recommending regardless of what the ad hoc group might be coming up with recommendations about the dumpsters. So whether we keep the dumpsters or eliminate the dumpsters, this would be a potential new rule. Mike Nice has talked with Parks and Sons about this, and this would be allowed. So if you have, if your in-ground trash is full, we would allow you to place an additional bag of trash or bundled landscaping debris beside that container prior to pickup. The actual timeline right now, we're saying within eight hours, we're amenable to wordsmithing that timeline. So is that something that would help people? Some people are concerned about the coyotes getting into the trash and throwing stuff around?
I'm on the ad hoc committee in lot number 1314, Rick Schmunk. Okay, so you have wind in Arizona. So you put your trash next to your garbage can, and guess what? It's down the street. So, I think you got to be really careful what you, where you go with this, okay? I recommended to Mike this morning, and I will just make the announcement, that I'm willing to buy two compacters and put over here at the garbage dump, okay? And then you guys can lease them from me or whatever. It's going to solve all of these problems, okay? So...
Well, we have, appreciate that. And you're on that ad hoc group, so we're really looking forward to what recommendations that come from the ad hoc group, which that might be one.
We've identified all of the problems, okay? And now tomorrow, we're going to work on the solutions.
Thank you.
So, the one solution is, we don't want to get rid of the dumpsters, okay? It's too, it's too convenient. I can tell you that there are some people in this room that will dump their garbage down at town center if you take the things away. You want to raise your hands?
Well, that's...
Oh, there's one.
That is a mature behavior.
Well, I, but you know what? It's realistic. That's the problem.
Well, we've heard they're also dumping on board members' property, too.
There's one other thing about the garbage, and I just want to bring it to these folks. I went down the dumpsters this morning just to look. And there are items in there that can be taken to goodwill. Hundreds of them.
We, we understand that. The purpose of this meeting is to talk about the rules.
I understand, okay.
Not to talk about the ad hoc group for the dumpsters and you're on that.
Barb, you, you talked 20 minutes about water, and, you know, the garbage is a bigger problem than the water.
It is. We know that. That's why we have the ad hoc group.
So, let's, let's forget the water issue, because I don't think anybody in here abuses the water, okay? But let's, okay?
They do.
All right. So, but the garbage issue, it's a bigger issue.
We're, we, we understand that. We understand that. And that's why we have the ad hoc group looking into it.
Right.
And they're going to come up with lots of different recommendations that, which we know are going to be good, and things that have not been thought of before.
Okay.
Regardless of what they come up with, Parks and Sons is willing to allow people to put trash out in a separate container the night before or within eight hours. And that is something they do in pretty much every community that they use, that they service. So this is an option that we want people to have, so that maybe they're not filling up the dumpster with these types of things that could be addressed just by normal pickup.
Well, they, they should have an extra container to put it in, because like I said, if they put it out next to it.
We understand.
The, the wind is going to do it, and, you know, I, I'm telling you, it'll happen.
I'm Janice Bud Fendres. I'm in lot 64. Just this week, I trimmed my oleanders. I trimmed my oleanders, but I had no way of getting all of my trimmings into those big dumpsters that we have up here. So I conveniently put them into a big black garbage can and sat it down by my in-ground, and the man came and took it in the morning. So they will do it. My suggestion is have a, if you're going to put something out there, put it in a big black or colored or some sort of garbage can as opposed to a garbage bag. The coyotes tend to, I know they can still get into the garbage can, but they're going to get into the plastic garbage bags easier than they're going to get into the others. And that helps keep some stuff contained. But it did work. Thank you. Thanks.
The next one has to do just about residence vehicles being placed in the resort. This is if we change the 24-foot minimum requirement down to something less, we would make this consistent with that. And here, it would be that it would have to be in like-new condition. Yeah, no. No, no, no. 5.1 has to do with it, if we change the regulation from 24 feet being the minimum to 18, we would update this thing here. And also, this one also talks about, from a CCNR change, it would mean that it needs to be in thoroughly excellent condition, free of rust, blah, blah, blah. And that is something that's in the CCNRs. So that is just changing that to be consistent with any change we make here, and also with the CCNRs. So did you have a comment related to that one, or is it related to the coming off the property once a year?
No, it's Bill Buckner, 1348, in regard to 5.1. Are you really talking about recreational vehicles or residence vehicles?
This is, currently, it's under what's a residence vehicle. And a residence vehicle is something that, it can be confusing in our, in our documents.
It seems like it should be reworded as recreational vehicles on that section.
Thank you. It's been this way. We, we haven't changed that wording, but we'll look at that and see whether it needs to be clarified.
And for the people online, you might call out the section number when you're, to keep them. I know it's hard sometimes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Before we move on to, I see there's, it might have a, this is regarding the trash someone put on the chat. It might be helpful to have a rough schedule of the times that the garbage comes through with our sections. That way you can put it extra, that's good. Two pickups a week for two people per lot should be enough. Would you recommend the, you change the extra large bags to an extra trash can? This would prevent wind and coyote. Great. All that's good. So, Donna, are you talking about trash? Okay, thank you.
No, I'm on the ad hoc. I don't even want to talk trash right now. This one says residence vehicles.
That's what he was just saying. We, we need to clarify that. We have not changed that terminology as a change.
I, I just, I, I want to make sure, because my car is older than 10 years old.
No, this really, a residence vehicle in the old days, Jim, Marion, you might be able to help me here, has to do with, say, a big RV.
Okay.
That is really considered an area that you are going to live in as your residence.
Okay, so it's just going to be the, an RV, not a residence, not my vehicle?
Not your car.
Okay.
We don't want you to live in your car.
Because I'm going to say, you guys going to buy me a new car?
Yes, uh-huh. Okay, the next one, now this is recreational vehicles must be in working order and removed off property at least one time per year. Lot of controversy on that. The concern, this is something that's been come up, has come up in prior boards, and has to do with the number of recreational vehicles that have deteriorated in place and us not being able to do anything with it. And there was a recommendation from some folks in the past, and so that's why we've brought it up here for discussion, that we require any recreational vehicle to be removed from the property at least once per year. We know there's controversy. What we're trying to get at, the intent is, how do we get at a way of assuring that we still, that your homeowner value is being maintained, and you don't have a recreational vehicle deteriorating in place? Michael?
Mike Rogel, lot 1130. In regards to this one, I've been there 26 years, been on the board, been on VRC, been on safety, been on all. And the question comes up that once one of the partner passes away, and you have, let's say, an 80-plus-year lady living in the RV, how can we put something in there that say we could do an onsite inspection to pass it rather than to try and get the lady to drive it out and then back in?
Yeah, Mike, I think, there's been a lot of conversations, so we haven't had the opportunity to kind of update some of the verbiage. One of the things they were talking about specifically, and I was talking to a gentleman earlier, people that have fifth wheels or big travel trailers that bought them here on lot, don't have vehicles to pull them or move them. So the thought was, maybe we do like a, a once-a-year inspection to make sure the vehicle works, the tires are not flat, everything works appropriately within the vehicle, and then we don't have to worry about it. The concern is about the motorhomes primarily, which, if you're a motorhome owner, you should know, or you, you do now, I'm going to tell you. Every 30 days, you really aren't supposed to move your vehicle because of the, the bearings, the engine oil, all of that stuff is supposed to move on a motorized vehicle. So there's a thought about that. That's why they went with, once a year. But to answer your question, yes, onsite, once-a-year inspection would be a great idea.
Debbie Cheek, lot 219. I'm trying to guess how many RVs we actually have in the resort right now. 800? 500?
About that, from the last count.
Do we have the resources to inspect them all once a year?
One of the things that compliance does every year is they go around and inspect your property to make sure things are fine. And people do get compliance letters if your RV needs to be redone, or your house needs to be repainted. So there is that sort of structure in place that could be done like this.
Okay. But we have trailers here that look fine from the outside. So as long as they look fine from the outside, you have no rational reason to go in and see the toilet doesn't work, the heater doesn't work, none of those work?
I don't think that was everything. We are not allowed to go inside a property. We, everything we can do is outside.
Okay. So what you're saying is they all have to be moved once a year?
That is the current proposal. And what we're hearing from people is, if there could just be an annual inspection, so from the outside, it looks like it's in like-new condition.
Okay. Because if it has to be moved once a year, how are you going to know that I didn't do it last month? And I just went around the block and came back?
It's all in discussion. But what we're hearing from people is that they're not wanting us to have it be an annual requirement that it move, but they'd be comfortable with there be a process for an annual inspection to incur.
I, you know, if, if the tires are flat, there's, that's an issue.
Exactly.
Right. But I can't see, if it looks perfectly normal, why we would have to move it.
Some of the other feedback that we were getting is there are many fifth wheels in particular here that were never intended to be moved. They had somebody deliver them, put them on site, and they don't have any way to move them. So that is one of the main reasons we started looking at not requiring the recreational vehicle to be moved every year.
Yes, Ron Born, lot 1511. I have a cottage, which is an RV, considered a recreational vehicle, but it's meant to be a stationary one. And now for me to move that, I'd have to put the tongue back on it, take all the skirting off, and that's ridiculous, you know. You answered, pretty well answered my question, but I thank you for that, too.
I say, well, technically, a park model is an RV, too.
Pardon me?
Technically, a park model is an RV, too. So, but we understand. We understand the, that issue of it stated the way it is.
Sherri Yolons, 1155. We don't have a park model. We have a big fifth wheel, but we, it is, with it slides out as 400 square feet. With it slides out as 400 square feet. We sold our truck because both of us are in our 80s, and we no longer tow it. It looks fine, but if we have to tow it out of here or pay to have it towed out of here, guaranteed, we're putting in a park model and building it into our Arizona room. And that's the reason we've kept our fifth wheel, is we wanted to see that an RV space remained here.
Thank you. So I think we've... You know, I think all the board tends to agree that, as it stated, the once-a-year requirement is not... Excuse me. Conducive, feasible, all that sort of stuff. I believe we hear that all of you want those... Anything that's on the lot to be attractive and like-new condition, and can we get at the same intent by having an annual inspection? We're good with that. So the next one. I think we've heard enough on 6.1 regarding the paved. I believe all of us are in agreement that we will remove that requirement. There was a... We believe it got in there because there was action being taken by the DRC at one time to change the requirements that vehicles had to be parked on a paved area and not on the gravel. There was miscommunication to me in particular about that, so that's why this got changed. But we're going to take this out of it. There are communities, though, that only require... That require parking on paved areas, not on gravel, because by pulling the gravel out back onto the street, it's not that helpful either. But we're not going there. We're probably going to remove it. Under six... We added under 6.8 prohibited vehicles. We just changed... Used to say cargo utility and golf cart trailers were prohibited. All we did was took out the word golf cart and just changed it to flatbed trailers, because golf cart trailer is pretty much a flatbed trailer, razor trailer, whatever. Under 6.9, we just added that any unlicensed off-road vehicles such as a UTV, side-by-side, blah, 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 are prohibited. Years ago, when many of you bought in here, a razor was not able to be licensed, and that's why it wasn't allowed on here. But now, they are licensed and they are used, and so we have a number on here. But if it is unlicensed, it would not be allowed. There are concerns from residents about the noise of those vehicles, but that's something that we really don't have the ability to regulate. So that's why we're still would be allowing licensed off-road vehicles, blah, 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 here. It's just the unlicensed. Any questions or comments about that? This was one. The restrictions on parking lots, that would be new. Our current recommendation is that it be limited to three vehicles. From what we've heard from residents is asking us to go up to four, two passenger vehicles and two other. You're able to have four... Yes? What is that? A senior moment I just had there? You're able to have four permits to get in and out of the resort. So we'd like to possibly change this to two vehicles per resident. So up to a maximum of four. So it'd be two passenger vehicles plus whatever the two. If there's only one person there, it'd be one passenger vehicle, one whatever. Can we maintain that? I don't know. But maximum of four would be on it. And includes the golf carts and the razors. Your hand higher. Your hand higher?
Judy Silcock, 1324. So that... We have four, two cars, a golf cart, and a motorcycle. So you're saying that is okay, right?
That's... The feedback... The feedback that we've received from residents, could we make it four? You know, the intent of this, it has to do with our lots are small. And the more vehicles you have, the more it is unattractive to your fellow residents. And the vehicles are getting bigger out there. So that's one issue, is that we have to maintain your property values. We've got a lot of feedback from residents, a lot of feedback that it's looking like a used car lot. So if we can limit it to four vehicles, two passenger and two whatever, that will help. And so that's the method that we're going. Also, by the more vehicles you have, the more clutter that you've got in there, it doesn't allow the compliance people, as they're driving by, to see whether that lot is in compliance. So...
So when you have company, can they come and park on the side of the road?
Yes.
For short-term.
That's a different issue. This is just for the residence parking. If you've got someone coming in... Now, personally, if you've got a guest in there for two weeks, personally, I'm not sure I want that fifth car on the lot. So... But that's just my personal opinion. But you know, if you've got happy hour going on, you don't have to invite us, but you can have their golf carts out there for those short periods. Debbie Cheek, lot 219. I'm just kind of curious is what brought this up? Because it had been four vehicles in the past, has it not? It never was in writing. It never was in writing. We've looked. It's not in writing. Okay. So shouldn't the issue be available space? We have one of the largest covered spots on our block. We can put four vehicles on it plus two guests, and we're not on the street. So why is that an issue? Well, the issue is that, again, back to how the community looks, we get a lot of complaints from people on how cluttered the lots are looking with all the cars. We get a lot of complaints about that, Debbie. And if you look around, and you know, people can be very creative on how they're parking. We've got people parking their golf carts on the setbacks within communities. So that affects the fire department to be able to get into the spots. So you could fill up your spot with all these cars and vehicles, but is that what we want for the community to look aesthetically? I am more concerned about people trying to crowd in more vehicles than their lot can accommodate. Yes. But if you have the space, we can put four vehicles on ours and still have patio furniture. You know? But some people are putting four vehicles in two spots, and they're overhanging onto the street. We know. That's more of an issue, but yet technically, they have four vehicles. Thank you. We hear you. But you're talking about space. What percentage of the lot is occupied? But in that case, you couldn't do anything. Got it.
Good morning. Judy Natamoto, lot 291. I don't think it should be per resident on the lot. I think it should be per lot, two cars, two carts.
That's kind of what we're saying.
Okay. Because initially, I think I heard you say resident.
As it would be, it would be up to four.
Okay.
In my personal opinion, it could be just that it would be if there's one resident, it's one car, one... How would we enforce that? See issue?
Right.
It's not enforceable. They could rent those other two places out and make a little income.
Tom Donahue, lot 876.
A little higher.
I object to the rule. If you have issue with people parking in setbacks, you should tell them to not park in the setback. I don't think the rule recognizes how people's lifestyle has changed. Things like UTVs weren't allowed here before. They're now common, popular sport, and we should adapt and accommodate that. I also think the rule needs to exclude motorcycles. I'm down to one, but I've certainly had more in the past. They serve different purposes, and they don't take up much space. If you have issues with... I think we have to adapt to the changing world. People have more free money, they can have more vehicles, they engage in all sorts of different activities, and I don't think the motorized ones need to be excluded simply because some people object to the aesthetics of several vehicles on the lot.
Thank you. The chat says maximum of four but must fit on the lot and not protrude over the concrete median. And the concrete median's been a rule forever, and if you drive around, that is something that is difficult to enforce. And that particularly is a safety issue, that anyone could walk into it and all. And we know that the... Particularly the razors and the off-road vehicles, we didn't allow them before because they were nonlicensed. Now, we're allowing that, so that's another vehicle that we're allowing. For those of you that have trucks, you've got bigger trucks than you've had before in there. And it is something, as we look at making sure that your home values are being maintained, we hear a lot from the residents that they don't want it to look like a used car lot, too. So, ma'am, go ahead.
Kathy Seddy from lot 92. I don't like the rule either. 92, yeah. I have a neighbor. They have two motorcycles, two golf carts, and two cars. They have a very nice lot. They're not crowded. You can see their happy hour space in the back. When I go by, I think these people are living life to their fullest. They're happy here at Happy Trails. So if you've got the space, I agree with the other speaker, that we shouldn't be restricted just because somebody doesn't like their neighbor's car is parked. If it's aesthetically crowded and bad, it should be corrected. I don't know how to exactly explain it. If your yard looks trashy, that's... You get a little note saying, "Hey, we can't see your full lot. You need to do something different." But the guy that has the space and has the toys, they should be allowed to have them.
Anything else? Thanks on that. The 7.6 was just added because it was a request from the safety committee that golf carts use on the right side of the road. That safety committee recommended that golf carts are encouraged to use the automobile lanes within the resort, because we do have a lot of people walking in those lanes, and that if your cart goes fast enough, why not just drive it in the other lane? So that's not a requirement, just an encouragement. Repair, 7.7, is that the repairs on your lot are... Be kept to a minimum, and that the other things need to be done in the car wash rack or the wash rack by the car wash. That really isn't a change in the rule, it's just a clarification in that when... It does identify when things must be done. Again, just a clarification of something that's been in place for a long time. Under vehicle storage, we just added off-road vehicles can be stored in the RV storage area. That was just an oversight. Under pets, it really is no change to the expectation. It just says that they cannot run loose at any time except in designated fenced pet areas. I don't think anyone has any concern about that. That is something I see people doing all the time, though, in that they forget that the city of surprise does have an ordinance that all pets must be on a leash, and that applies to us. And as Roberta says, that includes cats. Any concerns about that? I can't imagine that there would be. The restriction is that all pets must be tethered on the lot so as to unable to reach the boundary line, and no pets shall be left unattended outside of the residence. That means if you're in your house and you have your pad on your patio... Pet on your patio, and you're not there, that would not be allowed. The pet pens one is just incorporating changes regarding pet enclosures. That was approved from the DRC. Under 11.2, there is no change to this. It's just that in the past, it just said that pools and spas are open from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. during the season. It really is no change. We just said that we've added the winter hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., which has always been in the rules, but it was just never stated here. So which one do you have a question on, sir?
Pool spa hours.
Pool spa hours. Go ahead.
Dan Phillips, lot 676.
Hold it... Hold your hand up a little bit higher. Higher, your hand higher. Your hand on the mic there. And closer.
Dan Phillips, 676. I'm here to defend some of the swimmers, even though I'm not one.
Go ahead. I think we have the solution, but go ahead.
Yeah. And they swim in the winter hours, 5:36. And if you're going to... And the posting sign there is 6:00. It doesn't say 7:00 winter. If you're going to restrict them to 7:00, you're going to create a bigger problem than they already have.
So the hours of 6:00 to 10:00 during the summer and 7:00 to 10:00 in the winter has always been there. So this was just putting that in there. But what we were talking that we will add is that those people that are in... Swim water aerobics and that kind of stuff, or lap swimmers, can go in at 5:00. And this would be that if I want to have a party out at the pool at 5:00 a.m., that's not going to be allowed. I can start partying at 7:00.
That addresses their concern.
So the water aerobics and lap swimmers can go in at 5:00. There is... There was a request to change 11.10. Previous, it was that children were not allowed... Were allowed in the neighborhood pools during the summer. And people have asked us to change that, that they're only allowed at town center in the neighborhood pools if town center is out of order throughout the year. And so we've gotten some feedback from folks that yes and no. So children in neighborhood center pools, what are your thoughts?
No.
No. So you would be in favor of us changing it to that children are only allowed at town center pools throughout the year, except if town center is under... I think that's how that says. The swimwear, that's a change that's been implemented a few years ago when Maricopa County changed, and you have to wear... Children, not potty trained, must wear a swim diaper. It doesn't apply to those of us who might have an issue. Depends. It depends, you know? You're not supposed to pee in the pool, period. You know, I was a nurse by background, have to bring this up every once in a while. There is a medication called pyridium for the ladies, old ladies, I mean, older, those of us of my age group and above. If you had a bladder infection, you'd get pyridium and it'd decrease the pain, but it also turns your urine orange. I know of some former student nurses that did that as a prank in the punch bowl, and everybody had pool, and whoever they peed in the pool, we could tell who peed in the pool. We will not be implementing that. I'm not allowed to prescribe medication. So... So now, the audio equipment in the pool, this is something that currently it states that you can only allow earbuds or headphones. And we had feedback from people that they wanted it so that we could have some other speakers, as long as the volume was kept low. I've heard from people that they do not want us to change that rule, that they want it just headphones and earbuds. So we'll go back to that. Smoking and vaping? I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah. You've already heard from me, but Dennis Demontay, 1552. As one who has hearing problems, I understand the rule as it exists in all the pools during the season, when all the people are here. However, and I'll address NC2 specifically, during the summer, when it's 115 degrees out, there's nobody there. You may have five, six, maybe 10 people max. And at that point, at 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, when it's that temperature, anybody who's in the pool is not wearing earbuds. I think accommodation should be made for those of us who do use a pool at that time of year to use amplified music at a level that is approved by everybody there, and you know, even to the point of asking permission before you turn things on. If anybody objects, you don't do it. And I really think we ought to accommodate that for those of us who live here in the summertime. Thank you.
Sounds good. Sounds reasonable. The vaping and smoking, that's just clarifying the smoking rules per resident request that you're not supposed to do within 20 feet of building, 20 feet of fencing. The signs, that is just a clarification in the DRC guidelines, has nothing to do with for sale signs. For sale signs, for rent signs are still allowed. That's a separate issue in the community. That is something we can't change. Political signs is a controversial thing. A political sign is anything, it's defined by the state of Arizona, is anything that's meant to influence an election. So if Eisenhower was alive and we said, "I like Ike," it's intended to... So if Eisenhower was alive and we said, I like Ike, it's intended to influence an election. He's not alive, I heard. So anything that has a candidate's name on it is intended to influence an election. So political signs, the state changed that, the timeframe, it used to be that they had to take it down within three days of an election. They've changed that to 15 days after a general election. So this is updating that. There are also, in our state regulations, they've added that associated specific political signs, i.e. candidates for the board, may be placed by a resident on their lot. So we've added that. And that a political sign, this is in the state regulations, is that the size and number of political signs in aggregate shall not exceed nine square feet. So we've added that to be consistent with the state regulations. A flag that has a candidate's name on it exceeds nine square feet. So flags with candidates' names are not allowed. And then under, so are there any comments about the political signs? We're just trying to be consistent with the Arizona state regulations. And Arizona state regulations on signs and flags seem to change every year. So we're trying to get generic wording in here, so as the regulations change, we don't have to change the rule again. Under flags, the Arizona regulations used to have that we had to allow about six different flags. United States flag, Arizona flag, don't tread on me flag, and Native American. There were six, and military flags. It is now around 26 flags that we must allow in there. And it has, a lot of it came through COVID, and that was related to first responder flags, those types of things and all. But it is at least 26 that they're there. And then this last year, they changed it to now we must allow the Betsy Ross flag, and also any historical United States flag. I don't know, I understand the Betsy Ross flag used to be controversial. I didn't know there was a controversy. Anyway, so now we are changing the flags to say, the display of any flag is intended to, is limited to only those flags expressly permitted by Arizona statute 331808, or A1 through 7. Those flags must be displayed on a flagpole, limited to two per flagpole and lot. And then we will have an attachment that has the defined flags. There, we've got printouts of all of those. Yeah, and then we change it. So any heartburn about that?
Yeah, Bill Buckner, 1348. Does it have to be on a flagpole? Can it be a mount on it? Because a lot of people have a mount on the.
The flagpole is defined in our DRC guidelines, the requirements for the flagpole. It's not in our rules. So the flags would have to be on a pole. And if you have two of them.
May I clarify? Are you talking a flagpole that goes on the ground, a telescoping flagpole? You're talking a flagpole that comes off of the building.
Right.
Okay.
There's a mount on the side of the building where you stick.
That's considered a flagpole, too, so.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify.
They're limited to two flags, and they have to be those that are required. So that means, you know, there's a, there are a gentleman on, I don't know if you're here or not, but I seen this very nice flag. It's got a smiley face on it. But it's something that wouldn't be allowed. So, and my Seahawks flag, and my Huskies flag, my Ducks flag would not be allowed. They can be on a garden flag. So go ahead, Maynard.
Now, you mentioned that political signs have to be taken down 15 days after the election. There was nothing said about before the election. Now, I believe the state is.
71 days. That's in the standard.
71 days prior to the election. Not putting them up now.
Correct. 71. And that's always been in the standard. What changed state legislation-wise, it had, it used to be that they had to be taken down three days after. The state legislation changed it to 15 days after. We don't know why.
Okay. I just wanted to bring up that point, because that wasn't.
71.
Thank you.
But that hasn't changed. And what, so just a point of clarification. So if the two of us are running for city council, and during the primary, I lose and she does not, her sign can stay up until the general election. But my sign, the loser, has to come down. Marilyn.
Marilyn flying lot 392. You skipped right over the political ones. I know that they, it says it's supposed to be on your lot. I am very adamant about these great big flags on our golf carts. We have the right to have publicity on our lot. And if I choose not to drive by the lot to see whatever I don't agree with, that's fine. That's your privilege, and I'm my privilege. I am a trusty adamant about these people that have these more gigantic flags flying from their golf cart, or a Trump, or any other customer.
Or Biden, or whatever, or Hillary, or whoever, right? Right.
Yeah. Whoever's running. It might, I don't, I don't like it, and I don't.
So Marilyn, that's a slightly different issue that we, as a board, can control. So what we're trying to put in here are things that we must have in our rules related to state statutes. The things on people's golf carts may be things that we don't necessarily agree with. And we also know in the long-range planning process that those types of things came up as people were not happy about. But what we can control on our rules and regs is our people's lots. I can't control the T-shirt that you might wear, the bumper sticker that you might have, anything like that. If there was a way that we could figure out if or how we might address it, but for, right now, we can address political signs, particularly the flags which people find offensive for, on both sides of the political spectrum, in that it can't be more than nine square feet on your lot. And the flag is more than nine square feet.
Well, that, these, one guy that's got one flag, it almost tips his golf cart over backwards.
Well, that's, that's a safety issue for him. Tell us how you really feel, Marilyn. We've never heard that.
Yes, Terry Bader, lot 953. I'm just wondering how you folks feel about the barbecue flags.
That's to be determined, so, yeah.
I personally think we're living in this resort, and I think it looks quite tacky.
Got it. We hear you. We hear you. Yeah. We hear you. Separate issue from this, okay. So the personal sign and banner, so you were, this is a new one, to allow smaller garden-sized flags. So, you know, garden flag is a little, small, little, it's big. And hands on a hook, that they would be allowed and limited to only, fabric, seasonal, decorative, state, or sports teams are permitted as a banner on, or a garden flag. All decorative signage on lots must be in good taste, in moderation. The Happy Trails Board of Directors reserves the right to enforce any banner or garden flag that may be offensive or unsightly. Go Packers. Go Packers, yeah. But they lost to the Broncos. So 12.15, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Can you clarify that? When you say, like, team flags?
Oh, it has a small one. Small one.
Can it be on a three-by-five-foot flag hanging on a pole?
Well, that's considered a flag, and the only flags we are allowing are those that are required by the state.
And bags flags.
On a garden flag. On a garden flag. So. Seeing, I'm, just a second, I gotta check the chat. Got it. Okay, there wasn't anything new. The one, last comment had to do with Town Center pool. That was about kids and spring, summer, and all that. 12.15, we're just eliminating that because it has to do with contractor insurance used by individuals. It's nothing we can control, so we've eliminated it. 12.18, we added a definition of harassment, and that is to differentiate it from nuisance. We currently have a nuisance category in our rules and regs, and it pretty much relates to the senses. It has to do with what you hear, see, smell, those types of things that are considered a nuisance. Harassment is something that is at a different, higher level, and it would be defined as any contact, conduct, excuse me, directed at a specific person, which would cause a reasonable person to be seriously alarmed, offended, annoyed, or feel harassed. Then the board is required to take action when harassment is directed to any member of a protected class. We'll probably spell out what a protected class is. And harassment is something that really is offensive to people. It isn't just that you don't like the guy smoking next to you. That's a nuisance. If that becomes something where you've asked them to quit a number of times, or asked them to keep their music down a number of times, and it's a neighbor-to-neighbor issue, and actually then they start becoming obnoxious about it, that could actually be turned into harassment, or something that the HOA would need to get involved in. And that's it. That's all. So what we heard today is that there's a lot of tweaking that you want us to do. What I think you've heard, what we've heard is that there are things that you agree with. If there was some minor tweaking, and there are some things that you really want stated as is. So what the board will do now is we'll take all this information. If you've got any more feedback you want to give us, you know our email addresses and our phone numbers. We'll be having a planning meeting on next Tuesday. Well, we'll sort of go through sort of the final product that will go to the board for approval at the November board meeting. But we truly appreciate your input. You've got some great ideas, and I do believe that what we heard is that you are all, that you want us to take into account the changing community, but at the same token, we don't want it to be a detriment to our community also. Okay? Thank you very much for coming.